...and having his address as post office box 14674 Abu Dhabi, United Arab Emirates. Telephone number 9701 50775 7966, email... Represented by his chief executive officer, Mr. Rancy Abu Hassan. Hearing after referred to as a service provider, which expression show when the content so permits include letter certificate like here limited, which is a special purpose vehicle established by the service provider as case like even such a direct through whom the service provider shall implement this agreement. So I'd like for the Southeast Asia to elucidate on this specifically where a nation serves provider after all the discussion which shall be referred to as a service provider and says which expression in my mind service provider when the content so permits. I'd like for you to clarify where the content so permits shall include measures of table like here. Does it mean that this contract, sorry, this contract can only be executed by letter certificate like here as a special purpose vehicle taking into consideration the expression when the content so permits?
I'm waiting for the agreement, I don't know if you have it.
Do you have a camera agreement?
Yes.
Are you familiar with this paragraph?
Yes, I'm familiar with it.
So I just like a lot about part of this, you guys are issue.
What I'm not allowed and something regarding the friends or as clerk, manager that look at this person, still clear, clear. If you know for that, that's the issue. If you know for that, that's the issue. To give an order obligation to that would be making a prescription that they get differently. In a clear rating, in a description, one equal to, so there are no clear other way of the reason.
What is...
Why is that?
He read, he read.
What I've read, I can ask you what I'm concerned about the phrase that says where, where the context, I mean, the... So which expression show when the context so permits? What is your interpretation of this phrase? When the content so permits, shall be referred to as a service provider?
That would be if they're telling you to give my own interpretation like a contract. We upon that, that we contract. Where the content so permits. So that is the agreement that party that were to the two strike and you party also the contract and they gave the benefit. So if you asking for my interpretation of the rule, it will be so there too.
No, you are in a position, I understand, you are...
I just want to... We have a standard of the Ministry of Commerce has important meeting thinking that the, the, our year will be over and now that we cannot make. So maybe after this, we can allow him to...
Which meeting?
He can make a request and ask me.
The chairman?
Yeah.
The minister can, you know, always, so then you are one of the...
Okay, boy.
The minister can get already.
Okay, alright, go ahead. I'd like just to follow up, uh, 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 just to follow up from the Lupe. I think the, the representative of, of Justice, Minister of Justice, he gives a question. The question within the context of the contract, what does this phrase mean?
That's why I ask you. They say interpretation, you are going to address, we should interpret the contract. Within that content, within the context of the contract, what does it mean?
However, we are here to answer this now. We are participating. Maybe when you refer. If the contract is written and the boundary in the contract is ambiguous, then you have for interpretation.
No, you're not talking about ambiguity. It's not about ambiguity, uh, council.
So where the contract so permits?
Yes. No, really, technically.
This is a meeting. It starts from the beginning, mete, scientific, limited access. A company organized and registered, honor the laws of the Republic, I mean, honor the law of the United Arab Emirates where we dispute some number 156463. And having its address at post office box 14674 Abu Dhabi, United Arab Emirates. Telephone number plus 971 50775 7966, email refer to, I mean, refer as service provider. Which expression say where the content so permits includes medical scientific like here limited, which is a special purpose vehicle established by the service provider as the large unit or single through whom the service provider shall implement this agreement. So what is there you want? Is it any ambiguity in there? I don't see ambiguity. I don't see.
So the question is, the question is, service provider, the government signed this contract will create another company to execute this contract except for medical scientific like here limited. Now what we want to find out from you, because for this general.
That's it, that's it.
Whether the YB and other subsidiary company created other than this two?
Correct.
What in my view in the dance?
Okay.
Scientific Dubai. With that clause saying that where the context permits, uh, a special purpose vehicle in the name of Mete, scientific like here has been created to execute this contract. If Mete Dubai, when I hear, as we have noticed, for the public to know, the parties, the share, the shareholders of this Mete like here limited got into conflict. I want that to be freezing on their account, that they tell her they talk about. While they were in dispute in our courts, Mete Scientific Dubai opened MTS inspection services. Okay? So can you interpret whether it was right or wrong for them to do that? While this contract was being executed and they were in dispute on better like here limited? Was it right for one party to this SPV to create another SPV or move it to the other party?
Your honor, the difficult thing in reaching the conclusion you wanted to reach is that you are assuming that everything in the context are read. You are assuming that everything in the context are read. What I read say if this happened so, 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 so. So if in fact a person is stated, oh no, I cannot execute as a lawyer, then we are mistaken.
Okay, Senator?
Uh, will not the, will not the response from the legislature? Would you want to add data for procedure?
Okay.
Yeah, is that your honor?
Yeah.
That in the court? For him or for the Ministry of Commerce? I'm so sorry, David, please, if I care, may I just say the honor?
No, don't worry about me, I don't care about this.
I'm, I'm less, I'm less careful.
Yeah, so, uh, last, one last question. I, I want to go to 10.2 exception. Uh, this will go to, uh, the revenue authority. I'll let you read. As the project is for the benefit of the LRA and shall be transferred to LRA at the end of the term or any extended term. All materials and goods imported relating to the infrastructure, technology, equipment and construction and the implementation of the project shall receive exemption from custom tickets and levies through the exemptions for such materials and goods generally granted to the LRA pursuant to section nine of the law of the code of 2000 ASML. I'd like to know, Mr. Commissioner General. Do you have the authority? Do you have the authority to extend exemption granted to you, to a business entity? Do you have authority with all the consent of the legislature?
Well, um... Let me give, let me give you an example. No, 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 because that example will actually provide clarity. So, say the Ministry of Health get money appropriated in the legislature to buy a vehicle. And purchasing that vehicle, they go through the procurement process. Then they write to LRA. Say, Mr. Commissioner General, we are banning this asset for use by the ministry based on funding provided by the national legislature. And because we are a duty exempt entity, we are asking you to please grant the duty waiver for to seek a motto or to get this vehicle. And because that duty waiver has already been granted in law by the legislature. Then the LRA goes ahead and approve. So LRA by its statutory nature already have duty free privilege granted by you by honorable legislature. This, the asset being constructed belongs to LRA. So what goes...
At some, no, no, at some point in time, at some point in time, it will be turned over, that party express long as it is. At some point in time, it will be turned over to you in the future.
Yeah.
But as it is, it's not for you.
As a B O T.
Yeah, as it is, it's not for you.
But it is going to be for me.
Oh, yeah, we get there.
Okay, so, so here is another example.
No, that was only one figure.
No, 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 no. They actually fail. Because if this one fails, then it will be a big problem because there many things are failing. The Ministry of Public Works is constructing road. And then because they entitled to duty free, the service provider on the ministries behalf gets duty waiver because the asset has been created will ultimately refer to the Ministry of Public Works. This is how we have operated our legal system.
So, so the Public Works granted to our sale?
No, no, Public Works doesn't grant it to our sale. You grant it to Public Works. Just as you grant it to Ministry of Health, you grant it to LRA. So if, if I'm buying something with resources that will eventually belong to government for assets that government will acquire, then those assets are subject to tax exemption because I, as the ultimate owner, is an amount of tax exempt.
So, so let me come in.
Granted by the legislature.
I don't want to belong one of the various issue, uh, but these, uh, these are my talking points, so I just thought of raise them here. Let me say this, in the first instance, the contract calls for extension. And we know that this destination, uh, inspection contract, Biva was here before, when you're pitch shaping inspection contract. It was for years. It was not done for five years or 10 years, after 10 years, you say, okay, we train people that is take, take over and run it. This thing about 10 years or to run it a third day, they just put on code to why watch this, so like, because we know you're going to be here for the longest. Because the contract itself calls for extension. Is that definitively stated that after the initial period that it will be turned over? The contract calls for extension. And I'm quite sure after that, if it is extended, there will also be provision for extension. So this is going to be for the long haul. And until we get to the point where it's owned by the revenue authority, it is a business. Once the legislature extended exemption to the revenue authority, the revenue authority cannot extend it to a business entity with the mindset that after 20, 30 years, the property or why our investment, you know, will, will be transferred to the revenue authority. No, it is for the revenue authority. So that was wrong. And my position is I let a statement which I was stating in the debate that we don't have personally, nothing against Mete, but this whole arrangement fits shot from the legal requirement of ratification. I just let us stay down, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Lupe, thank you for your contribution. Yeah, Senator Tilon will take the vote. Okay.
Since I went back and forth, I haven't... First, you are not ready. Have you seen the Biva report? Have you divided and prepared? Do you have the divided and prepared?
Well, I don't have it here with me.
Although I believe you have it, as this is a...
I've seen it, yes.
Will you provide computer with it?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Senator Tilon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'll come back to this because we, we here for a purpose. The business community, I, I will present, I, I will just in South Korea, we depend on, we never die here. Living in South Korea. Yeah, that's who is to shift their continuum back for business. That's what they do, both of them. You see these bottlenecks or these bureaucracies are the free port. Is the reason why, uh, they've posted the normal continue they were shipping by year has dropped drastically? They asked us to do something about it. So it is with the business community, especially the someone like here, this is in our home, we have to free port. I want to ask again. The services C T M providers, that is seen services or kind of services, letters for, for buying? The question is, are we duplicating? And if so, why? Can we reduce the bottleneck and the bureaucracy? So that that reduction of the bureaucracy and the bottleneck can also be a reduction, reduction in financial headache on our business community that is based on, uh, a period of all these people. What matters rather doing that C T M not doing? What C T M doing that matters is not doing the question. Have you got the answer to that? That general question. Everybody here is forward that, I think apart from LRA that don't have legal obligation with, uh, with C T M, the justice ministry, the government ministry, LRA, not of Mete. What matters doing here that C T M not do? What C T M doing that matters is doing? So we can move one of the charges. If they are both necessary, if those services necessary, they might be, you tell up. I got another, another, another concern. My only answer to that. Maybe they send it that we have through this community so that we will know, more of these companies duplicating, we will move more of these companies. It will reduce the economic headache on our business community and our people. Something was be done as a result of this. Rather than just having all the discussions and resulting to that. What C T M doing here that matters now, what matters doing that C T M or who are they doing C T M quite now? The chair, the question say that nobody get answer.
Yeah. Well, I go the question.
Mr. Commerce.
Again, we're going back to the same sentence, you asked a question before, Honorable, that I tried to answer and you guys copy. Same thing happened, the same thing happened the last time. You are asking a question and you, and the Senate is not giving us full time to answer. And I said the same thing, I said, yes, they are duplicating. And I tried to explain on what basis they are duplicating. And it's getting personal and every time I'm getting fed up to the point where every time I respond, it means that I have personal interest in any of these companies. When we approach this, we approach this strategically with LRA to identify properly the impediment to doing business and the additional costs.
The reason you say we can cut it off. I want to know what the duplication is, how are the explanation? C T M doing here, matter doing here, matter doing here, C T M doing here, duplication, that class I want, or that you will want. What is the specific duplication, sir? You just said duplication.
Senator Tilon?
Yes, sir?
Clearly, you have established that there are duplication and there are duplications. Uh, I, you know, you've asked a question, I think this is the second or third time, the answer is not coming. So I would help also discuss it in committee room and see if I make a part of our recommendation to Flannery.
Okay.
Honorable Senator, Honorable Senator, yes.
Cannot ask to send a complete report, a complete, uh, paper, a white paper answering all of these questions?
No problem.
Probably.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I have a question, Senator Tilon?
Yes, Senator.
Mr. Chairman, please. I think the promised minister asks to, he want to give a answer for the sake of the hearing.
Yeah.
Not gave you the opportunity.
Ask the question.
So we here for you, so you can say that for the record that you were not given the opportunity. Now he's saying you going to send document. Give him chair, not give you the...
No, no, they would not do it, they would not even like you explain.
No, no, you all are calling, you're not calling the tutor, please.
I'm on the one.
No, you get to that.
Wait, 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 hold on. Uh, call this, call this, Senator Tilon.
Wait, wait, I, I'm the chairman, you can, you can do that. Let's, 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 let's calm down, everybody calm down, take a deep breath. We do well up to this point. Yes, no, no, wait.
You tell me, you answer your question, you rely, you answer.
Relax. Senator, yeah, Senator Joseph made an intervention and it's acceptable to the committee. Mr. Minister of Commerce, we have two minutes to answer this question.
So again, we look at all the players in the value chain. First, as I stated, I was trying to state clearly, that nothing Mete is doing that you yourself cannot go on, I'm sorry, C T M, that you yourself cannot go online to get. They union to some services that they were playing that were critical security service. That service should be played or should be provided by the national authority. Even the service Mete is providing now should be implemented by the LRA. Our strategy that we can come up in public, I was hoping that, I asked you, Honorable, that if we had a committee meeting, we will try to relay some of those. But the fact is, we are endeavoring to capacitate the ministry, LRA and NPA eventually to assume those responsibilities. Okay? It's duplicating. I eluded that there is a container that someone has cleared recently. They play the C T M fee after the container arrives here. So that essential service of cargo tracking is not being implemented, it's not, because people are just paying money. The services that Mete is providing during our discussion with Mete, we negotiate them with them to reduce the cost of, of those services also. But these are things that if we are given a chance in a committee meeting, would discuss properly. So yes, there's duplicating. And at any point, if any of them, whether A P M terminal, C T M or Mete can assume all of one responsibility for cheaper, that's our objective. And that's how we have approached it.
Thank you, thank you very much. So clearly, there are duplications. We will, we will consider all of this in our report and also our recommendation to Flannery. Because at the end of the day, it is the executive that implement this contract. So the recommendation.
The chairman, the...
There are no...
The chairman?
No, 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 no.
Chairman, also, and also, Mr. President. Ambassador Jalas Al. The War House.
Tell me that, Jalas.
Yeah, we have to. You can have a difficult. We have mutual respect. We represent the latter for our city here. See whatever way you want to take. You can have short, not, not, there's respect as you are doing. If you don't want to be here, yes, play war act. But to do that, we're fine, but you don't come here and do that to us. You don't want to sit there. We have a special job that you definitely you have to do. So don't come here, bro, I respect. As I said. And don't want to laugh us.
Uh, Ambassador General, do you care to say something?
Senator Tilon? And the mother before me, let me apologize. But you know, I'd like to propose on a few to this Allah's body. When this is coming, you ask the questions, please give the witnesses' chance to speak up and let them express their thoughts completely. You know, following is happening, we're being bashed, you know? This is your problem. And Senator, you're right, mutual respect. I apologize if you feel that what I do was offensive. But this is exactly how you make us feel. When you don't give us chance to answer, when you ask us questions, then we're trying to answer. And then you're cutting us off in instances, you not allow us to, to, to do. So since we come here, Senator, please, report here. Who did you receive the highest level of operation from in this investigation? Yes, so you're willing to work together. This is about moving our priorities forward. But we have to be able to do it now with that. Let people express their complete thought when you ask them question. So once again, I want to apologize if the honorable senators feel that, you know, I was out of line. And I will take heed of that and I will make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
You can pull your laptop.
Senator Tilon. You do, you do a lot.
I was there for the record here. And even in this separate book, when there's argument, legal argument, the justices come in between speeches and ask you to go to the point. You either apologize or you hold your ground. If you felt authentic, if they would take other, but not apologize there.
Additional apology.
Ambassador Jalas, we can do that. I'm sure you will have to be like, maybe, because of that. Not to worry about us, no matter how people feel or what we still here. Let it wait. Hearing, it's not nurturing. So for us, if there's something probably to the point. Again, I take note that my question on duplication and the free port that creating all this financial, where you have the business community is of each, there are tissues. I wanted to go to my second question. Mete. What inform the contract with Mete? What capacity did Mete show? Mete Dubai? Why are they involved? Are they involved with custom related issues in Dubai where they are based? What capacity, custom related, did Dubai, had the letter show to merit or to, to win this contract? What's that?
Yeah, so in other word, what capacity did they demonstrate during the procurement process that led the committee that selected Mete to choose Mete? I don't into buy or in other parts of the world.
Mr. President, answer that one there.
Yeah, Mr....
So, Honorable to your question, and I think we tried to use that the other time. I tried to use it at the other time. Government is continuity. This contracts are, this contracts are entered into by a previous administration. My focus and my calling focus for my process is not to only look at, you know, the historicity or the problems, but to make sure henceforth, these legal agreements benefit our people. So we spoke about pricing and multiple prices, that's where we came from. I'm not able to go into the justification, I'm not authorized to investigate them. So my answer to you is, our discussions with them and I think how we were, we, we plan to approach it unless you give us better guidance by 35 false in our agreement, is to make sure that we renegotiate these terms to benefit the people. And if there are duplicit, uh, duplicitous or re, uh, or duplicitous of charges, we can address them. That's the perspective of the Ministry of Commerce. As we said that before, some of the services that they are providing, Mete, that we saw, we can afford to do so, to, 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 I mean, to, to cover those costs immediately even more than power the LRA to implement it. And that's where we are coming from, that's where I'm coming from. The changes that the Ministry of Commerce and the engagement believe that if we are able to implement this properly, some of your concerns for in a month or two, we can track the cost of bringing a single container to Liberia by $200. And that would imagine that is A P M terminal also, and the shipping lines, the freight, the freightfall with us. And that's where we're working from, so I'm not going into a contract itself. We have guidance, you can decide if it is right or wrong.
Can anybody else want to contribute to that from the...
I want to listen to what he said. And I think maybe now we get it out of our share. But now only you question the responsibility. So what we say we know is when you are just communicating, we know the proof our negotiation there by your predecessor. Or you are there now. So we ask... Or you are there now, so we ask the question. And you feel like we're trying to push a guy like you know, we want to understand. You know, some of us, probably some of us have not seen that event, that you are bad. Because you are bad. So we ask you, and we continue to ask you. You can be as mad as you want to be, but continue to ask you because you're right there. But now we're personally responsible.
Honorable.
My main is that today, so we do that. Okay, so we are understanding what I've heard.
Honorable, I'm not, I'm not angry at all. But when we leave, with all due respect, when we leave our schedules, give you the, the Senate, with respect, the criticism of all your invitation. You're asking the last week, four times. Four times to answer the same questions. Controversy will personalize this, I don't know how to answer. So that's where I'm coming from, as long as I'm not a man, we're all beginning to provide this information.
Thank you, Minister, we can belong as public figures on this thing, what, what that means. So yes, thank you, Senator. The only reason why we're here today because the other parties contract, they not show up. But I need to be the Minister of People, I know what it means to be a Minister. That's everything. Senator.
Mr. Chairman, there's a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, they answered the question here.
I got the chair, want to follow.
Mr. Chairman, they answered the question here.
Yeah, they answered the question.
No, I follow.
Okay.
There's a question.
So this is a direct to, direct to other players of any, uh, bank chain. I just want you to be very clear about that, and to who are the other player?
I meant in the, I meant in the trade chain, for example, looking at the cost of doing business. You have the trucks, you have the charge per container, you have the shipping lines, you have discrepancy in charges. You find one shipping line charging three hundred dollars, but documentation fee is a, uh, shipping line providing same service for six hundred dollars. So we're looking at all of those realistically.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, uh.
All the platform, of regardless of your question, of the complex, that you're passing the problem, uh, from Metec. But again, uh, in terms of capacity, we allow, we see the error, you know, in people's process of this common. And we are here to give the facts to the public, so. Uh, my director of compliance, we got ours at that time, I wasn't here at PBC, but I used to have data and data will have a problem analyzed. So what I've been doing, I want to give up time, we've analyzed, essentially approached on this, we've analyzed data, but not historically. There were communication centers, PBC at that time was compliant, I had rejected, we request no objection, because it may appear to be public. And we'll say on the, we need to prove that there was series of communication timeline that we have to follow. And in, in, in twenty nineteen, the NRC approached PBC at that time to grant, to, 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 to support, to provide a war in the project of Metec. PBCC responded, oh, correct, question that she sent. And it was sent, well, just to do some inspection, verification, component. Those people laughed, and they came back, and at the time, the Minister of Commerce came back and wanted to pee. The PBC said, oh, no, honestly, oh, correct, we just go ahead and give them the objection. At the time, I'm telling Rosney Paul, she was, she was the, the executive director. And she said, she also rejected that request again the seventh time.
And there was question from the Minister of Commerce.
From the Minister of Commerce, yes, she rejected that, she said, there were issues that would be addressed. And those issue wasn't addressed. And what was necessary or controversial, you mean?
So see, PBC, see, PBCC deny proof?
No, PBC deny proof, and no objection, no. Cause saying of how, at the time, the commissions, there were timelines, they didn't follow that. And again, to be honest with you, there are some issues there. And if you look at these, these are different or contract application, so when we get it, it's a while, and they even come to us. We even get any communication as there's still somebody's, uh, his instrument. So basically, it's all in the public space, because the PBC gave it, those, I don't have no idea, but they even come across us. We have similar experiments with, well, the, the AI's immigration, and I personally wrote a letter, but you cancel the contract with your attack. It was a similar example here, because of non-performance over three years. You sell a contract, government, they disappear. You know, the channel government, they come, pass, oh, no, why is it, you answer, no, 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 you can't do it. The government laws, there are people at the time, the government abroad losing almost sixteen million dollars a year because of the resident or payment. So we send a letter to the new commission, I don't know what they, for the record, data, that will have no enforcement power, monitor, don't have to, send up, attack, get up to the chairman on defense, honorable, for his, his, his data. So the whole thing, we met it from our standpoint. And what it did, I was very just to look, of capacity, the pressure, they will use a host of Beva pass information. That what it did, the president, the government, they use Beva, they enter home, they didn't, didn't have a website, they don't even have a website. But no container will verify. They can't, or they didn't even write to PCC, they didn't have a website, the Beva show was in there, so that was about one second time. But like you said, the government contained those, at the time, several have the, directors told me saying, those are issues we have. So that's what we have.
This is an important intervention by the PCC, thank you so much, what else? And then I hope we talk, uh, for some time. Um, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the, yeah, one minute, can we hear from the NRC? Because you presented up for the interministerial concession.
Yeah.
And so, can you walk us through your role in all of this? And it was you who wrote justice about the little opinion that will come to the legislature for application, which the other lady and also them talking about. If you can come in, what do you know about this, that that contract process?
Thank you, Mr. Minister. What I do know is what I've shared with the committee, uh, that I went today to bring the executive director, who has spent the longest time uh, at the NRC, to help answer some of these questions, as I'm, uh, the strasser. Uh, so the executive director.
But he was not here the last time, uh, uh, Mr. Senator Al, can you administer the rule to the NRC quickly? The two of you, sorry. Ambassador, Chairman of the National Conference. I, I, I wish.
Do you have a swear?
Do you have a swear?
Just a one of the gear?
Just a one of the, yeah.
Truth?
Truth.
Yeah.
The south one of the truth. Oh. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Edie.
Yes, sir.
You have the microphone.
Honorable Senator, distinguished guest. So we just want to, uh, make it clear that NRC rule, when it comes to concession, there are three aspect of concessions. You have pre-negotiations, you have negotiations, you have post-negotiations. NRC, a critical rule in the pre-negotiation, has to do with procurement and negotiation aspect. Um, I wasn't directly involved with the evaluation, um, and procurement process, even though I was at NRC at the time. Uh, we had a team, and I believe a brother here also was directly involved, uh.
His brother, his brother.
Uh, from LRA, was involved with, yeah. So I see a presentation here that was prepared. Unfortunately, one of the staff that was directly involved with it had traveled, but then he had left, um, a presentation.
Okay.
It says, uh, financial and technical evaluation report. So to the best of our knowledge, we re, we learned that there are series, there were several ministries and agencies that was involved with this procurement process.
Yeah.
You had the National Investment Commission, I believe that chair.
Yeah.
You had the Ministry of Commerce, the Ministry of Finance and Development Planning.
I, I normally don't interrupt witnesses when they are asking questions, as I, you know, but can you establish if a letter came from either the president directly or through his minister of state at the time, asking the chairman of the NRC to constitute an IMCC for this process?
I don't have that letter, I have your check.
Okay.
Honorable Senator, I, to the best of my knowledge, I've seen a letter and study.
Okay.
Um, even I have a concession certificate.
Correct.
So again, I, I'm taken aback by, you know, that a concession certificate wasn't issued, so it may, honorable.
And who, who issues the concession certificate?
PPPCC, so it means we have to validate this concession certificate.
Very good.
Um.
All right.
Do you have a copy of the certificate? Yes, I have a copy. Uh, we did, we did.
Uh, so, so, wait, it's in the possession of the committee.
Oh, yeah.
The concession certificate, the concession certificate that is in our possession was issued by the Ministry of Finance and Development Planning.
Not PPPCC. Yeah, okay, yeah, concession certificate.
Yeah, it was issued by MFDP, not the PPPCC. For the, for the NRC.
They say the way you ask.
No, so there's no objection.
What do you have, what do you have?
This is a concession certificate that's issued by the Ministry of Finance.
Uh huh.
And it's a PPPCC no objection, that's different from a concession.
So please, Senator.
So we.
Do you have a copy of that, no objection?
We can find that and see, we, uh, uh, I, I, I will have to look through, I will have to find out from.
So you are contradicting what the PPPCC just said.
To the best of, as I said, honorable Senator, I wasn't part of the technical team.
Yeah.
But I have learned, and I may have seen, I strangely corrected.
Okay.
That, uh, there are three key documents relating to Metec.
Okay.
One, the president constituting an IMCC.
Yeah.
Two, concession certificate.
Yeah.
And three, PPPCC no objection.
Yeah.
Uh, so we have to go back and check for those doc, documents and then be what is there.
Uh, PPPCC, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna make a quick question. Uh, what a gentleman just said that we gave a no objection, no, on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, uh, the, uh, the executive director of NRC, he's a model of great, he sent a letter, I was. And asking for no, no objection for this thing, Metec, it was also rejected. But since I done my mind, obviously in charge at the time was Stephen, Stephen Saint Young. He, he, he rejected it on two conditions, the same thing that appeared before, like I said earlier. It does not have an inspection, it appears to conform it. So realistically, PBC did not bring any objection to, to this process. All the communication from the file, the director of compliance, who reviewed the document, is there with me?
We're investigating that.
Okay, so the NRC is saying that they may have a document, please share with us. The committee does not have no objection letter from, uh, either the PPPCC or any of the government institutions. We do have, we do have the concession certificate. And so it would be good for you to do that by Monday, is that okay? If you can share with that, that with us on Monday.
Yeah, honorable Senator, we'll look to the archives.
Okay.
Senator, my director want to say something.
Yes.
The beginning of any concession is the offering of the concession certificate by the Ministry of Finance. That doesn't mean that, uh, uh, there is a no objection to, uh, a world contract. It means you have the right to start the process of doing a concession. So after that process, you have an approved procurement plan. That procurement plan was approved by PPPCC. The REOI were also approved by PPPCC.
The one that the, uh, LRA talk about.
Yeah.
Okay.
When RFP was launched and the, it was, uh, a request for proposals was launched. After the evaluation, the documentation was brought to the commission. When the document was brought to the commission and we review those document, we found that what Metec submitted was basically a, a supporting document from Beva. Beva. On top of that, we also researched Metec Scientific Dubai. Metec Scientific Dubai, at the time, if I have the official website, I doubt whether they do have that website now. We do see that the, 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 uh, Metec Nigeria has a website, but that was.
To that point, I read the, the debt evaluation report and it indicated that Metec Dubai was providing similar services in Beirut, in, uh, Takaradi Port, and somewhere in land port between Sinidal and Mali in the port. Were you able to authenticate that?
Those were, uh, past performance from Beva.
Beva.
Uh, Mr. President.
LRA. Uh, Colley, Colley, again, I'm going to come back to you, uh, we're going to fill the Minister of Commerce. Uh, okay, please, yes. Uh, no, 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 please, they're charging.
I'm sorry.
This is how it works, yeah.
Call him for water.
Yeah, LRA is, and Mr. Samoah.
Thank you, Senator.
Uh.
Okay, so you don't have.
Senator.
I always. So if you're on the hook and our police, we're going to make, um, a noise to us. I think it's important that we provide certain information, uh, that we have.
Yes.
On the technical competence of, uh, Metec, let me go back the short history of why we arrived on Libya. Like in Commission, there were, there was agreed by all, uh, by the global community that pre-chem and inspection which Beva provided was no longer required. The second part is that the government of Iraq, for trade facilitation reasons, and by demand from the business community, wanted to do destination inspection. The conduct of destination inspection required serious financial investment, which Beva was not prepared to do. Uh, if you look at the, the report, the evaluation report, certain, uh, two components of higher duty were proved without prejudice. It was basically because it did not fit the financial philosophy to make that kind of investment for pre-chem inspection in any country. We were requiring serious investment in infrastructure. Here is the point. The, there has, there has been this conversation that Metec did not have the technical competence. But legally, and the legal minds in the room will allude to that as well. A business that has technical competence and a business that has financial solution can merge and form a positive execute a particular contract. This was the case in this particular procurement.
So are you saying that Beva? Beva and Metec marked?
Beva, under the submission that was made, there was a memorandum of association between Metec Scientific and Beva that was already existed in Liberia. The records are clear, in fact, the person who submitted the date on behalf of Metec was the managing director of Beva. We still have the records.
Can you please share those records with us?
Share that with us.
I don't have that.
That's important.
In other words, Beva was, I mean, Metec Scientific had a financial solution, what we require as a company, but they, I mean, Beva was not prepared to do it. They said, we will do the financial and you provide the technical support. Even the clear report of findings that are still being issued for valuation and for passing, which is a major component of this particular work of, of this service contract, is still being performed by Beva Christmas. That is a fact. At the end of the day, once the submission was made, it was made better, but then they had a memorandum of association with, uh, Beva. Henceforth, the references that they provided were references to Beva. It is true that the NRC said, I mean, the PCC said, it was references of Beva. We have a memorandum of association with somebody who has a technical competence.
Sir.
We were put in.
Sir. Does the government of Iraq have any subcontract with Beva, or any, any Metec agreement?
No, Senator.
Anything in the Metec agreement that says the association with Beva?
At the procurement level, yes, there was, yes.
Anything in the agreement, sir, that links Beva, that turn to Metec Dubai, question?
Not in the contract, no.
So the explanation you giving is something that were put into consideration with tech, uh, technical capacity and financial capacity.
Yes, sir.
But there is no legal, uh, issue, or contract with Beva.
There is no contract with Beva, the contractor is MTS, which says it has technical capacity to another company that has technical capacity.
The other company is named.
Is Beva.
So.
In the contract?
Yes, remember in the contract, sir.
Where is it? Where is it?
It is at the procurement level. So at the procurement level, you have to provide your technical justification and then you have to provide your financial justification. Do you have the finance to do this? Yes. Do you have the technical competence to do this? No, we don't have the technical competence, but we have somebody who's working along with us that can provide.
Chairman, Chairman.
The memorandum of Dubai.
What color?
Centre of Culture with Metek Nigeria, correct?
Sorry?
And Metek Dubai and then Metek.
Yes.
Correct? Metek Nigeria is already the service provider.
Senator, Senator, the contract that the government signed is with Metek Dubai, as far as we know.
Correct.
Yes.
There is a Metek Bureau.
The government Bureau doesn't have any contract with Metek Nigeria.
So why has, so if the government Bureau doesn't have any, so that Metek Bureau and Metek Dubai do the thing to, to provide services. Metek Dubai is providing the money and if some contractor, Metek Bureau took, as a service provider.
It is provided a financial resource.
Agreed.
It is B V A that is providing technical support. And that, and that's why I said even till today, every sort of figure that you receive from Metek is been issued by B V A. That work is done in the background.
So, so.
To you.
Yeah. Yeah. I want to pick a bang on that, uh, pick a buzz on that, uh, so. In that case, uh, what there is a relationship between, uh, Metek Dubai and, uh, B V A? What, what's the relationship between the two, uh, entities? They said, uh, consolidation, merger, are there t- separate entities?
Senator, Senator, you've been a lawyer. When they, when they made their submission, their base submission, there was a memorandum of association which is a legal.
Between, between the two companies.
That's a, that's a, that's a relationship which I imagine, I promise, one of these clear.
Yes, that, that's a relationship.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Senator, how, how to tell us?
Uh. Uh, do you want to?
You're very important, Senator.
Yes.
You guys, you ladies.
Uh. L R A, what do the, the commissioner of something? Uh. We have to believe in the name, that mean?
Sir. Samoa.
Samoa, I believe. Are you aware that is? God who operate here, B V A. Is the same who know of Metek? Are you aware?
Really?
Are you aware?
Senator.
All that B V A just said, Metek, no way.
Senator, I might have those personal details.
That I want.
Of those personal details, absolutely. We are looking at public institutions here and as far as we know, we do know Metek and B V A.
We appear here, the public bill.
We will have to, definitely, we will do it.
Alright, the company will, uh, Senator, sir, Joseph.
I see that you say you want to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Colley. Uh, I know you have seen this, this particular contract. Have you know you seen the, the Metek, the agreement? Uh? So have you read the portion of the responsibility of Metek? You have a copy then?
Mr. Commissioner, you're ready here?
Uh, yeah. You have it? So I'm going to the point that Metek, all of the commitment they, none of them was fulfilled.
Yes.
Am I right? Some of the commitment were fulfilled, which of them?
Yeah, if a show is not, is not a member of this hour committee, who is not in the chatroom, can you just answer if you want to?
I told you, I told you, I told you. So why you opening is that, uh, uh, the functions and responsibility of Metek.
The major function they get, for which the contract was consummated, are not relevant to. Because, because the priority that for the contract was consummated was to build the D I site.
Exactly, exactly. None have been done. No, that's the point I'm, I'm, I'm going to, none of they have been done. So for now, their function is to only collect money and all of their commitment, they have, they, they have not been able to execute any of them. That's why I tried to push. So, uh, in this case, then why do you think we should still allow them in Liberia?
Very good question, Senator.
That's a very good question. So when the contract was consummated, they, uh, desire by the government at the time was that they would invest money. Build this D I site, get equipped with the, uh, uh, scanners, build the capacity of custom. In a mode that ultimately custom would take over. Because of all the problems that have been due, it has been three years, no construction has been done. Meanwhile, the fees are being paid. To date, the forty percent contribution to L R A has accumulated to five million dollars and change. But an eighty percent contribution for them has exceeded twenty million.
Hmm.
Twenty million, yes. So the question now to answer is.
The contract is performing?
Yes, the contract is performing. And the reason, because this, the, the, the execution has not started in earnest in terms of the construction. The thing was that the construction would have been done in a year and a half or so. And then the operation now would have generated, you know, the return, I mean, and recoup their investment. But because of the delay, the fees are being collected, even though there's this minimum fee that was temporarily instituted because of the public outcry. But still, the amount collected to date has exceeded twenty million for them. So the question is, if we cancel that, then Liberia lose double. Yeah, we lose the, the fact that we still don't have a D I site. And because we don't have the resources to, to invest in building the D I site ourselves, we don't have that capacity right now. We still will have to hire, you know, a tech party, a service provider.
No, I want asking my right here.
Yeah.
Lord of. Metek is collecting money. For that perform all the contract, their services. Then we made a trade to cancel them today and bring another piece of T shirt that can perform our services. And then they, they are contracted, that will capacity they can handle. Who would be preferred? If Metek demonstrating that they will give this, if I'm sure of it, or we can continue to collect the, 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 the. For ten hours, they, 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 they are not contracted.
Okay, uh, good, I mean, while, while making my presentation earlier, I mentioned that, but let me just mention it again. When the contract was consummated, part of the responsibility of the government under that contract was for the government to provide a land space in the port for the construction to happen. That land space was not provided until eighteen months after the contract was signed. So that's half of the time that, oh, thirty-three years. After the site was provided, then Metek did the drawings and L R A approved of those drawings. Before the construction could begin, the government, it, it encumbered the land for two different concessions. So the space now, yeah, Westin Plaza and Congo Miami. The government, I understand this was amended from the Senate. So they encumbered the land, so it means the drawing had to be redone. Because now the space was no longer the dimension that, I know, that was of the basis for the original drawing.
Sorry, did that, did that instruction from the Senate come, uh, after the contract was consummated?
Yes, it was after the contract was consummated, it was after the land area had been provided by the port.
Lord of.
What did I?
So, so, um, this my guess, people of, we would like to see how that, from the, we would like to see how that mandate from the Senate was translated. Because we were in the Senate, we don't know about it, or don't remember, I was saying it. So we like to see how that mandate from the Senate was translated.
But I don't think it was translated by a written mandate. I understand that there were individual senators who specifically were advocating for, for those things to be done. I was reading the article.
Let the record, let the record show, sir, that individual senators don't speak or act for the Senate unless plainly take that decision. So individual senator who may have done it, this is what I hope, and I'm surprised that even N P A or Metek will have taken such, uh, many from.
I don't know.
Senators also have.
No, they weren't communicating with them, they were.
Yeah, so what I'm asking, by what means, was that for, for the Senate communicated, so we see.
Well, there's the, the landlord in the port, in the port is the port.
Yeah.
So when the port brings it to L R A and comes back and say, we're taking this piece out.
Right.
You know, I mean, there's not much, you know, L R A, all the service provider could do.
Right.
But the point is that they got encumbered. And because they got encumbered, the drawings had to be redone. When the drawings were redone to, to scale down because of the encumbrance, then the court action started. Which eventually led to the freeze that was imposed, which this new government then inherited. So, so this is part of the reason why no traction has happened. But what has happened lately is that the Ministry of Justice has come to the Supreme Court and the freeze has been lifted. As part of the reason I explained earlier.
And they don't.
With the freeze lifted now, we're moving L R A's contribution to, 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 to a private account, a, a, a commercial bank account, honor, you know, owned by the government. But then, if, we've also mandated Metek to begin the construction work and finish it within one year. So that is a need, so we'll rework all this timeframe, all this eighteen months, eighteen months they had there. We're now going to rework them and make sure that they deliver this asset, you know, the construction and the equity within one year.
So let me make, so you want, uh, Metek to do that capacity, capacity, uh, within a year?
Until the government takes an action contrary, that contract still exists, I will continue to do my own contract, contract, until.
So when Metek perform that, they serve it and, uh, perform it, since they will be, they will be, they will be, the President and the Minister.
Oh, no, 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 Senator, no, what you mean there, when you asked me, I'm trying to answer, then you continue off, and, and, you know, but, let's go on. You know, I apologize, my apology was very sincere, you know, Senator. So, yeah, so, so here's the thing. And, and to answer your question directly that you then asked me, N P A, Metek, uh, what are you calling it, C T and Service? Those are all services we need right now. Because the government is not able to provide, a requisite government agencies does not have the resources to provide it. The management of the port operation, that was concession out a long time ago, and that concession agreement is still on. That is, uh, 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 A P M Terminal. Now, they do the, uh, port management. The, the destination inspection, to which Liberia ascribe, you know, as part of our ascension to the W T O. We need to do, you know, destination inspection now, because this is the way of the world, the World Global Committee is doing that. But then at the time, even though we ascend there under President Selly, we didn't have the resources to build a destination inspection site on our own. And also custom didn't have the capacity to manage it, that's why it was outsourced. So we do need destination inspection services for trade promotion. Then the third thing is the cargo tracking. Again, the problem with cargo tracking, the current agreement, is that it's a, a custom function that has been used up by the N P A. For the cargo tracking part, that is also an important service that is needed. Because this one has to do with our compliance with ensuring security, you know, like was explained the last time. All the thing that the, the, uh, N P A for, for G T M S, uh, uh, Ludato are all factor. So those are important services. The question is, are the fees, you know, reasonable? The answer to that is no. So like the Commerce Minister said, one of the ways to cure, and I had this conversation with the committee chair, to cure this, is to bring the parties back to the table. And not only that, and, and that's why the Commerce Minister, Ludato. The problem with facilitating trade in Liberia is not just with Metek, uh, A P M Terminal and, uh, G T M S. The issue is wider and that's why, you know, we need to take a holistic approach, the shipping lines, the company association.
Mr. Commissioner, General, one minute.
Yes.
Hello, uh. Committee members, the last president would like to meet with the acting of the F A C. Yes, okay, we excuse him today. He's still not old, my friend. My, he's still not old. But no, but you have to come back, oh.
He's coming back.
Okay.
Yeah, I get this thing now, I will see him.
Okay, yeah, he can go, yeah.
No, no, he's just there.
Yeah. Oh, you want go too? Proceed, proceed.
So, so, Senator, all of those services are important and necessary. Until we can get a capacity, you know, for each of the agencies of government to be able to handle this. So, so the G T M S arrangement, they have two parts, the cargo tracking and also I C S compliance issues that the port is, has a very responsible to deal for. Now, the day when we build the port capacity to be able to do that, maybe do the scheduled part as well as the, the role that A P M Terminal is playing. What we need to do now is we need to start investing in the port capacity. So that by the time the A P M contract runs out, the, uh, the port is able to take over that management.
I heard that the contracts are for renegotiation, the A P M Terminal contract, no?
It's, it's coming before you.
No, I just, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, so, so.
Yes, sir, they do that.
The Minister of Commerce said, there are duplication. Uh, there was big sound.
The, the duplication, as I understand it, is in exact, in a context of the services being provided.
Okay.
Or the number of service providers. Who, one service provider do the destination inspection and then continue tracking, the answer is yes.
So it'll be the same thing?
No, there'll be marginal fees, but imagine the two overheads that the, the public has to foot. So if one entity were today, they will have one overhead, so it will be.
Is it possible?
Yes, that's possible. Can we do that? That is possible, let's get on it.
Well, with our contractual obligation, I mean, there are legal issues, maybe council can advise.
Yeah.
These are solid.
We have to follow up question, we have to, the last question.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the, uh, efficiency of the services. Because, uh, I think all they have to do with the cost of providing the, the.
Our vision of these services, uh, we should get. They, they, one of the objectives, uh, especially of the, uh, D I contract, is exactly to get that efficiency. Like I'm fully explained earlier, right now, everything we're doing, we have to do inspection, we are opening condition. If we have the D I site that is equipped with the scanners, we can do no intrusive inspections. Because these huge giant laser scanners, the continuum will just drive through.
Right.
You know, and we can see, so the two ports, you know, will be, if they are without capacity, our current volume will be too small. You will not see things line up the way we see it now. So, but because things are manual and because there are challenges with declarations, under declarations, mid declarations and all of that. This is where, you know, the bottleneck can come from, because then the custom folks now, there, 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 the way, there are ways of categorizing the different kinds of goods that are coming in. There, those are red flag, yellow flag and green flag. Anything that has a red flag means that we got information to the effect that we need to look at these things. But because there, there's human services, open this up, go in, low through, it takes a lot of time. With the D I site, we will be able to get a level of efficiency that, that we're all hoping for. So that the throughput per continuum can be a matter of few minutes rather than hours or days, as the case is right now.
Okay, yeah, uh. Someone will agree that, uh, back in twenty twelve, we brought in some scanners in the port for, for, for this purpose. So, uh, it is, you know, they improved that process, but I, I don't think they lasted. So this is uh, this is good, yes. Uh, LRA, I, no, 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 just, just quickly, I, yeah, Jim, I'm, I'm coming, I'm coming one minute. I I have, I have a question for LRA, two questions really. Were you notified when METEX Dubai uh established MTS inspection services to execute the contract while they were in court with their partners in METEX Liberia Limited?
The answer is yes, Senator, and the reason you haven't gotten a letter from me is because we've been looking for it and just to do on it.
Okay.
If it's okay with you.
Please, please share with the community, that's one. I'll come into you, my, my colleague, number two.
Chairman?
Yes. Okay.
I don't want just now. There are time now.
Well, folks, this is on TV, thanks for joining us, we are here live at the Liberian Senate.
Uh.
Where an.
So you've just told us that the contract has been performed financially to the extent that um the service provider has realized about twenty million dollars. Besides the encumbrance on the land and the redrawing of respects for the building, et cetera, who, could they have performed other things, or not the performance, something that Senator Jose was talking about, since now they have cash? Or are there, are there investments out to cash flow or or what?
No, they've been doing some things in the table, I give you a few of the notes I shared with you.
Okay.
If you look at the last five items, are things that they're executing as ongoing?
Can you say for the public?
Yes, um, to commence destination inspection, they're doing that. To do an assessment of the duties and taxes they did that a long time ago. And then to uh expect each else's parif classification, one one hundred ninety-nine percent accuracy, and that was ongoing right now. And then to do in intrusive inspections so that we could do three hours the ET, uh TEU, then uh that is on continue.
Are 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 these uh, are they using technology that they invest in to do this, or they just feel human beings that they paying?
It's just human beings.
It's a manual now.
Yeah, the whole is, everything is manual.
Okay.
And then provide custom with intelligence and risk.
Okay.
We've been getting those.
Thank you.
Yes, so uh I just a quick question to Commissioner Jaro. Why is the turn of investment uh by METEX, by the destination inspection side?
It is expected to be between fifteen and twenty-five million.
Will you please break that down, what we, uh, between fifteen, why we take it to twenty-five?
The, I don't have the details before me right now, but I can provide the details. Yeah, so the the reason is between, that is the estimate was done about three, three and uh, two, three and a half years ago. So now those numbers will have to be revised to reflect current realities. And also, we have an opportunity too, because things have evolved, we we would ask them to do some, you know, adjustments, modifications because of advanced technology, some of the things we have contributed to, and all that. So that will impact on the process. So to answer your question, oh, it's okay. The the letter?
Yeah, you can say it.
Oh, no, I said it here.
No, you can say it.
Okay.
We can talk about the port, they have finished the project together for the.
Okay.
Very much, Chairman Kholmi. Well, I'm glad to be in this hearing, I think your various statements and comments kind of answer most of the questions that I have, for example. Although we have been back here before to appreciate the inspection and we recall at that time, the revenue sharing, which is also a concern of the Liberian people, was better than what METEX brings. I listened to Honorable Samoa that the DI inspection requires some serious investment and I like the fact that we established that the contract is largely performing, they have raised so much money. I wonder if I know, what is the level of investment now that METEX has drawn out of port? That's one first question. Are we satisfied with the level that we are at?
Go ahead.
Okay, also the Minister of Commerce clearly stated that the three companies are, that three or two, they are all like doing similarly. And that one company, if I all of you there have established that, that one company can do that with a lower overhead and that will reduce the burden on our people. I was encouraged by that. But later on, I started thinking when you CG indicated that we are vulnerable, there's no way we can cancel the contract. And so I don't know what you advise with me, because we have a contractor is performing financially, but on the investment side is not performing, even though we get, we we sign the agreement with the understanding that a certain point, the Liberian government will take over, but we don't see that plan of taking over. It's like once we sign the contract, we are done, we realize until the next conference comes and a new contract is signed and we'll continue that forever. When do we have a cut of point? I would say we would just say, and say we don't have the capacity.
So so uh I will let my colleague start coming, but let me just provide on a question of level of investment. Uh, for all intents and purposes, for me, the the main purpose.
Yeah, this is important because um when I ask you my question, so that you can bundle all of this. I just wanted to know, since this contract was concentrated in, I believe, twenty eighteen, up to now, with the financial performance, uh, we know that it was supposed to build a destination site, but because of the land issue in the port, that was delayed. But I'm, I know this on the performance, uh, I mean, the the performance part of the agreement, things that were agreed to the agenda, to the agreement, there were things that should not be done that are always meant, that's the one I want us to answer this question. Please say, since today, what investment have they made that they now require land? You know, except apart from the manual process, which is just described, or it's important. There's a long time for more investment to be made, in our opinion, but maybe we are wrong, so please enlighten us.
Let me let my colleague take the first step.
Okay.
Senator, if you look at the revenue performance, from a customs point of view, I think revenue is improving compared to ICS.
Yeah, but that does not require a natural investment, right?
It's it's something of revenue, it's probably fine. So if you look at the terms of reference on this contract, its valuation, its classification, that will require investment, except the higher locations. Now, I mentioned that Lucid has not been prepared an issue till that it's a contract, that's the common fact is first. That's how it's going to perform. In terms of her intrusive inspection, which we mentioned, that is, I have to admit before the Senate, this for me, yeah, that is on a very low skill and the reason is that we don't have the potential to stay available on the port. You only do three at a time, yes, they're performing that service, but there's not much in it. Unless this particular elaborate facility that we're talking about is built, there's nothing we can do about it. So those parts, in terms of the risk management, giving us, doing all the market analysis and giving us the risk indicators for what the target for invaders, uh, revenue there, so what if, all those are provided, we can not deliver.
Is there anything for our outpost and our border crossing point?
So that is, I can explain that and that is actually in relation to the person that later that let it act.
Yeah.
Minister, we come from the background where over twenty years we have.
The record should not say Minister.
I know.
Sorry, sir, sorry, sir, sorry, sir. So 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 after over twenty years of having the service of VIVAC, we realized that the promise of capacity really wasn't working. The way this new contract is structured is that after this contract, there should be no more, from the point of view of the central agency, which is LRA, after this contract, there will be, there should be no more service provider, the agency should be capacity that to take over. And the way it is structured is this, counterpoint operation. So we we are now talking about the deployment of three D scanners. The three D scanner is not an issue of going to control worship, no. The three D scanner is about sending people to officers to school, learn how to operate scanners and work side by side along with the service provider. In fact, eventually, after a year or two, they will only be provided instructions that our people will be doing it hands on. And every aspect.
How long is the contract for?
The contract is actually for ten years.
Is it renewable?
Uh, is, well, every contract is renewable based on the agreements of the partner. But our intention is not to renew, it's just a clause that's providing the contract, the standard contract.
Okay.
The second part of it is that the contract is reviewable in five years, in a year and a half, that contract should be ready for review, for for review.
So so right now it should be reviewed?
No, no, in a year and a half. But then um, but then uh Senator, with respect to uh uh the the Senator, Senator Babta's question on the on the issue of our capacity right now. That capacity issue is actually like almost past the storm. We have to do exactly uh 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 what we have to do to make sure that by the time they're leaving, we have the skills to be able to deliver what they can deliver.
How is that it?
The second point is what the the Commissioner Jaro explained. Everything that we have done under this contract is tied to the land. The land has to be provided, the facility has to be built, now as soon, the committee has been needed in a year, facility should be delivered. It was tied to the land it provided, it was tied to the town influence, now that the town is on frozen, they're on the mountain, they're doing. They have submitted the drawings and we have reapproved the drawings for for some of the of of the construction.
I think uh I think the question is about what other performing gaps there might be besides uh the land and other things you're talking about.
I I think I did answer that question, if you look at the, if you look at the entire thing, it's about construction of the construction of facilities, two deployment of scanners, and then three provided valuation and classification services and rate management services. The rate management services have been provided, without any uh uh uh, you know, the money is available on that. The valuation and classification services have been provided, the inspection services have been provided, but we have to state that it is up to the state where we want it. And the reason why that is a key is because their downstream bath stage, the space that we have now can only accommodate three containers. If we build an elaborate stage of course, that is definitely going to happen, but yes, the other services are being provided as contemplated under the contract.
So the capacity really, as I mentioned at the start, is that teaching upon the space here, I will train the people here to deliver. So you say you will send over there, have you started that?
The capacity we were expecting at the start has gone to target in terms of valuation and.
Yes, yes, so I spoke on. Yeah, Senator, let me? Answer the last question first. Yes, in fact, when I took over, uh, one of the first things that was very far was counting for all these vehicles. And they're all new, I mean, relatively, new, they're the newest of the vehicles that LRA has. And those vehicles are still in the fleet, we've been, we've been able to verify that. Now, it's true that the bulk of the procurement that has been done so far with this has been for vehicles. That's because uh uh Senator, my understanding is that the set of vehicles that was originally procured for LRA back in the day when LRA first started, when you were finance minister, all those vehicles, you know, have um, you know, have all gone down. So it was necessary to use some of this money to buy, you know, essential vehicles that need for the operations of the vehicle. Now, Senator, uh uh uh, to your question, the capacity building has to be sequenced in a way that you don't want people to go learning about maintaining scanners, about operating scanners, when they come back, then there's no scanner. You know, then it takes six, eight months, the voice cannot start coming. So you want to synchronize the training in such a way that when a destination inspection, construction is advancing, then you know that this training is maybe six months. So then you send the people so that it can be sequencing a way that by the people, by the time they arrive, the scanners are available for them to start working on it. So like like I said earlier, we've mandated METEX, uh, this contract is going to continue. Then they must complete this, this construction. In terms of the major aspect, for me, what I see here is is a construction contract for you to build asset for the government. That hasn't been done, that hasn't started apart from the drawings. So but before, they were going to take eighteen months because they will have to bring in uh the resources. Now the resources are on hand and they generated almost all of that resource in country. So my my mandate to them, and this is what is going to be reflected now in a revised work plan, is to ensure that since the resource is not a constraint, the land is available, you got cooperation and and willingness to work with it, for the government to work with you, I don't see why it can be delivered in one year. So hopefully between now and June of next year, the construction should be done. We should all be in to shortly see traction and movement, you know, in terms of the construction. And six months down the road, then they will identify Liberians who are trainable to go for the, have the requisite background to go for those trainings so that by the time they completed their treatment, I mean, training, it will turn for the scanners to arrive, you know, have something to do when the scanners happen.
But one of the questions, Senator, I need a mention.
No, I'm supposed to be speaking.
To be honest with you, everything that is done is well intentioned. Two years ago, when VIVAC was here, they they contract covered land, land borders, airport and seaport. Our objective is eventually custom to do it on her own. Under this contract, we have built the capacity for customs to handle land borders on our own and we are also building capacity for custom to handle everything at the airports on our own. Under this contract, we have MTS as well cover airports and land borders. So the entire country of all the eleven or twelve land borders that we have is covered by custom law. The our airports, even the spring is in operations, is covered by custom law. The only area now that we have the concentration for the contractor is at the seaport. And that is why we are saying we're well intentioned, by the end of this contract, the contractor, the contractor should go over here and custom to do, take over the entire country. So now we've done land borders, we've done airports, it's only seaport that is outstanding.
I think we've been there, uh, here, uh, received a few questions from the public and I would like to ask them, then hopefully we can, if there are follow up questions, if not, they will go here and for the. And this one goes to the LRA, why did the LRA desire to do business with with the new company that was created, uh, which is not necessarily in the original contract? Is the LRA to do diligence on this new company to establish a dedicated? Uh, the other one is, is the LRA aware that section six point one of the Liberia Association's law, is this a special law?
Yes.
Association law, that's.
Yeah, basically, of course.
Yeah, that's in the board of directors, that's how to manage company. For energy is to happen, especially as material, at the, did the LRA claim that the resolution of the board of directors was required? That's a question from the Liberian. And then, well, yeah, we just, yeah, I have to ask a question. Then I also, so, so.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
Yes, so. Uh, we, what we've reviewed and what we've seen is what we can stick to because as, you know, has been established time and again, yeah, we were in there, you know, to understand the reason, yeah. What happened was that in the contract, it said that a special purpose vehicle will be METEX uh scientific life, METEX Liberia Limited will be the STV, yeah, and then uh sometime, I just sent you the letter, Senator, yeah. Yeah. The, um, contract holder writes the Revenue Authority to the effect that they have now changed the, uh, uh, SPB. And this letter is dated.
March, March twelve twenty-three.
Thank you, Senator.
Yes.
This letter is dated March twenty-three. So in March of twenty-three, the contract holder writes the LRA, informing the LRA that, that essentially they have established a new SPB for the, so this is all the information that we have.
Okay. Yes. And so, um, if Metek Liberia is mentioning the contract as a SPB, um, was the contract amended? Was the contract amended when they got in, what, MTS?
No, no, Senator, um, since all the documents were reviewed, we are not seeing any amendment to the contract. So the only thing we've seen is this letter from Metek Scientific Limited informing the LRA that they have established a new SPB.
Okay.
The same way too, the fee structure in the contract are now what are being followed, like I mentioned earlier. There was a letter which the committee chair read to this body informing Metek that the government had decided to use a different fee structure temporarily, but then that is what is still in effect. So again for that, we have not seen any amendment to the contract.
Thank you. So why is the role of Metek Liberia now? Uh, who is this in Metek Liberia and MTS?
Well, in the execution, in the execution of the contract is, uh, uh, MTS Scientific. I think that's a me. You know, they are the ones who are operating here as a local operator. Since this letter was written, you know, M, M.
MTS inspection. MTS inspection.
Sorry.
Yeah.
They're the ones who are operating, they're the ones that were introduced to LRA as a new SPB.
Many could have called the replacement for.
Exactly.
Metek Liberia Limited.
Right, yes.
And it is because of that, hmm, that the dispute.
Yes.
That's where the dispute arose from, right? Uh, between the parties that established the first SPB later in the contract, uh, came from. But Metek, like you say, it's a, she provided.
No, 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 in fact, since I took over, I've been in job four month. My first time of seeing anybody from Metek Liberia was the day we had the LRA.
They went to a Metek inspection.
Yes, yes, they're meeting with Metek inspection.
So they are not, they are not the brand, they are not the code, they're not providing the services, uh?
No, no.
You think it is, is it?
No.
Thank you.
Which one?
Okay, so in, I, I asked this question before. Uh, when the contract, the contractor was fully described.
I'm doing this instance, being a deep person and not being a lawyer, will refer this to the Ministry of Justice so that they can, they can review and advise ultimately.
Yeah.
Is this a broad business strategy here? I would like to know if Metek Scientific Liberia are a stakeholder in the contract that started executing this contract before MTS inspection service scheme was legally dissolved.
Want to establish that. Inasmuch, I asked a year my colleague about the conditionality. The fact that it started and then at some point, another company came in. We want to make sure that there was some legal dissolution or something that happened there. Is LBR here? No?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. The last question from the public asked. Do with, uh, given that the NIC, uh, talk about getting a no objection and PPCC said that it's a nice, in a stronger strength, they never issue any no objection. Um. Can the PPCC or the LRA, uh, walk quickly in, in a minute? Walk the public through our concession process quickly? I think they want to understand how they're, those who are following us, how does this work? And why is the no objection important? Do you see one go first? Okay, NIC.
Okay, so, our Senator, so there are two documents we've established so far. One, the President Constitution, uh, CC, we got that concession certificate, the initial finance. We got another document, the procurement plan that was approved by PPCC. Now, um, for a committee member regarding no objection, he's out of the country, just received a response from. Um, permit me to read that.
Sure, go ahead.
Madame Paul, PPCC ED refused and Chairman Gray argued that according to PPCC Act, PPCC only needed to be informed and not to give no objection. And the IMCC proceeded with the words of the contract of MTS.
So in other words.
Talked to Landford, it was part of the process, uh.
Okay, so in other words, PPCC did not issue a no objection as the, the chairman.
Yeah.
CEO indicated earlier, but somebody said that that was not needed. Who is that person?
He said here, the chairman Gray argued that according to.
Chairman Gray of NIC.
Yes.
I want a record to reflect that, that it was the NIC former chair who said that the PPCC no objection was not needed. And then that took the contracting process forward. Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Well, I want to, I want to thank all of you, all of my colleagues, those who were here earlier, it's Friday, everybody is busy and those who stuck with it for, for your contribution, for helping us to provide clarity on, you know, on this, for pushing this due process, the Senate due process forward. I want to thank our all my colleagues, uh, for your openness, for your patience. Uh, sorry about all of the distress, uh, the perceived bullying. It was just not intended for that purpose. I think we are interested in understanding that these contracts, you know, were consummated uh, consistent with Liberian laws. And I think all of us as Liberian citizens are obligated to ensuring that our laws are respected and also considered in these critical stuff. Thanks to the LRA for your cooperation in this. Uh, we've been working with you as a community, you've been very responsive. Um, and you've taken some steps. But I just want you to know that in a normal country, when laws are broken, there are consequences. If we don't start to take action when people break our laws, we don't have a real country. All we have is a theoretical country. That is why there's a lot of stupidity here, so much noise out there. We accuse each other, creates more, more scrutiny than the three days it goes away. Uh, later on, when I was not getting enough traffic with NIC, I managed to get the chairman. Since then, they're very responsive, recognizing that he's new. He will say give me a day or two, but he was able to provide most of the information, including the concession certificate as well as yourself. To the PPCC, I did the same thing, contacted the CEO directly, very responsive since then. The only person I might engage here in the solace for, you know, because our view here in the Senate was that this contract should have come here. Uh, given that, um, uh, incentives were given, but then Senator Nukwe asked a question whether that was given through the one that was given to the LRA. The committee would discuss that, we have the judiciary chair on our committee to look at that. But it is the considered opinion of most of the senators that this contract should have come here for that application. Unfortunately, we have not been able to really talk to the non-Liberians with the financial capacity to do the things that the LRA must do in order to be ready to do this on by itself. And you can tell clearly that there is a dispute. Uh, our job is not to settle the dispute between the parties of this contract. As a result, as far as I know, our committee has not engaged them outside of this room. And it will stay that way. Uh, there are ports in Liberia. And when they form their partnership and show they have appreciation somewhere outside of Nigeria, our responsibility is to our people and by so doing, establish the of this contract. And we'll make sure that we, we do the proper recommendations to Leonard and then we'll leave it to the representatives of the people to decide what to go and follow. Having said that, I'll ask the Sergeant of Arms to, unless my colleagues have something else to say, to, to release, to release the witnesses.
So, Sergeant, um, we're not releasing the witnesses now. So, the witnesses have been discharged and, uh, to the small TV, thanks for watching, this is man, um, in public.